We'd like to go ahead and call this board to order. May I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry. We're opening this evening with the Board of Finance meeting. We'll do a call to order and then the pledge. Pledge first? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a short moment of silence after, and we will do roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Amy Lor.
Present.
Rick Berger.
Present.
Carrie Lobello.
Present.
Stacy Killian.
Present.
Ken Warner.
Present.
James Felton.
Present.
Christina Cruz.
Present.
We would like to open this meeting, Board of Finance, with Donna Wilson presiding.
Thank you.
Present to Indiana Code and Board Policy, the Board of School Trustees is required to meet annually, elect officers from their membership as the Board of Finance Officers, receive and review the report of investments of the prior year, and review the overall investment policy of the school corporation as contained in Board Policy 6144. President Killian, it would now be appropriate to elect officers of the Board of Finance. Board officers already elected may be declared the officer of the Board of Finance if you wish.
Madam President, I move to declare Board Officers for the Board of Finance to be the same as our school board officers.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained. Thank you.
I am pleased to report this evening that interest income in 2024 totaled $3,639,494.23, up from $1.65 million in 2023. As detailed on the spreadsheet in your board packet, interest paid on checking account balances totaled nearly $135,000; money markets, $1.7 million; and certificates of deposit, $1.8 million. Interest earnings were received to the Education Fund in the amount of $2,417,417.81, but specific investments made from the Rainy Day Fund, the Insurance Trust Fund, and Geo Bond Funds also provided those funds with $640,494.34 in Rainy Day, $112,765.88 in the Insurance Trust, and $468,829.29 in the Geo Bond Funds. As of this date, we have a schedule of certificates of deposit with staggered maturities in 2025 with interest already anticipated in excess of $1.5 million. Other cash balances are routinely held in money market accounts with current interest rates exceeding 4%. We will continue to monitor rates in order to maximize our interest earnings moving forward in 2025. With that said, I respectfully request approval of our investment interest earnings report this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion to approve the investment report?
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, are there any questions?
Job well done, Donna.
I've got a great staff that monitors interest rates all the time.
Well, I just think it's excellent to see that kind of planning from public institutions. I know the county is heavily invested, and to see that for what our purposes are here, it's just a wise stewardship of the money that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Thank you.
As part of your annual finance meeting, we are now required to present the School Corporation Fiscal Indicator Report as prepared by the State's Distressed Unit Appeal Board, and we're going to refer to them as we do as the DOAB. The DOAB was established to monitor the financial health of school corporations across the state and recommend corrective actions where appropriate. They accumulate data based on our reporting submitted to the IDOE each year. It's important to note that the Vigo County School Corporation is not considered a unit in distress. However, we are required to review these indicators each year with our board. The DOAB data we are discussing tonight is through December 31st, 2023, so keep in mind that 24 operations are not included. Please also consider that although the DOAB provided their own slides for these fiscal indicators, we eliminated grant funds and recreated several slides to present our operating fund data alone. Grant funds customarily support specific programs, are short-lived, and are supplemental to the overall operations of the school district. Their revenues, expenditures, and fund balance, or lack thereof when speaking of federal funds that require expenditure prior to receipt of funds, though beneficial to the district, should not be considered as an indicator affecting the financial strength or weakness of the district. You can see the first slide shows fall 2023 ADM of 13,159.8 students. It also shows 2024 assessed value of the county at nearly $4.5 billion and the estimated population of Vigo County of 106,355 individuals. Slide two clearly illustrates the progressive loss of students since the 2015-16 school year. Fall enrollment is defined in blue and spring enrollment is defined in green. Starting with the 1920 school year, the state required reporting of ADM by in-person and virtual learners with the chart showing fall virtual enrollment in orange and spring virtual enrollment in yellow. Let's now move on to the fiscal indicator review. For purposes of our presentation, as I stated earlier, we are concentrating only on the district operating funds, the old general capital projects, transportation, and rainy day funds, and starting in 2019, the education and operations funds, with the addition of the operating referendum fund in 2020. It's important to be reminded that when the funding silos changed activities or offices that supported instruction in more of a business capacity were pulled out of the general fund and combined with capital projects and transportation funds to become the operations fund, and activities directly tied to classroom instruction were left in what became the education fund. Here you can see side-by-side annual comparisons of revenue in orange and expenditures in blue for those operating funds. In 2016, you can see the district experienced a funding surplus followed by three years of deficit spending. Because of the spending pattern, the district appealed to county voters, and based on the vote in 2019, we added the operating referendum fund to turn the tide on the spending pattern. You can see reversal of that trend in 2020 and the continuation of an operating surplus through 2023. The transition to the new fund structure makes comparisons of cash balances prior to 2019 difficult, and based on restricted use of each fund, not totally comparable. But we've stacked the fund balances to illustrate the decline and recovery in fund balances. You can see the 2016 year-end balances, followed by the three years of declining balances as we spoke about on the last slide. As we look at the columns, you can see each component part of the combined cash balance. The darker blue to the left is the general fund with capital projects represented by light blue, and starting in 2019, you will see the education fund in green and the operations fund in dark blue. Transportation from 2016 to 2018 required a general fund subsidy just to maintain a zero cash balance, so you won't see any orange in the year-end cash balance columns in those first few years. Please also note that cash balances through 2022 were still lower than combined cash balances back in 2016. During the period between 2020 and 2023, the strategic use of both the operating referendum and COVID relief dollars, primarily ESAR and CARES, along with the consolidation and repurposing of some schools, led to increased cash reserves as shown here through 2023. The administration's clear intent during the period from 19 through 23, and one that continues today, was to right-size the district, building reserves necessary to offset a loss in revenue if the operating referendum is not renewed after 2027. As the board considers future strategic planning goals, cash balance targets will undoubtedly be something to consider as we continue efforts to ensure the continued financial success of the school corporation. Although much work has been done, we realize these fiscal targets are always a work in progress as ever-changing demands and increasing costs are commonplace. The next slide was created by the DOAB. It shows the district's funding components, the base of tax support in red or pink, the operating referendum layer starting between 19 and 20, other local revenue in the lavender, and most of our funding from state support as evidenced in blue. The additional funding on the top is from federal sources in gold, and they've pulled out specifically federal stimulus revenue, ESAR and CARES, at the very top of this slide. It's important to note that the blue or state funding is contingent upon ADM, so that's why it is important to show the enrollment slide when comparing financial data of the district. The final slide prepared by the DOAB is a snapshot of the operating referendum fund revenue provided since 2020. The growth in this fund's revenue is directly attributable to the county's overall assessed value growth. Limits have been placed on the amount of growth the district can capture moving forward, but you can clearly see that the 16.22 cent tax rate generated over $8 million of revenue in 2023. That concludes the review of the Distressed Unit Appeal Board's information. I believe that the data clearly shows that although we went through a period of deficit spending, we have reversed that trend in recent years through right-sizing efforts, the strategic use of COVID recovery dollars, and the addition of the operating referendum fund. We also acknowledge that we still have work to do and continue to recognize the importance of financial strategic planning. We will do an in-depth review of the results of calendar year 2024 operations in March, and you will see the results of our continued efforts in that presentation. At that time, we will also look more at individual fund cash balances and discuss how those balances can be used and the restrictions on each fund type. I'd like to ask that you accept this presentation as our required annual review of our fiscal indicators, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
At this time, to open up for questions, we need a motion to accept the financial indicator report.
I'll move to accept the financial indicator report as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
So, Mrs. Wilson, I think for the folks who are looking especially at this, how did you call it, DOAB?
DOAB, Distressed Unit Appeal.
Sounds like a bad music group or something. As they're looking at this, comparing it to the declining school population, the money's increasing while the student population is going down. So my first thought is, is inflation calculated into this so that we're looking at it through the appropriate lens? But I think for the average person, there would be a big question there. Could you speak to that?
It's important to note that over the last several years, the legislature has put money in the base foundation funding where we get more money per student now than we did back in 2016. That has increased. We can argue whether or not that that's kept place with inflation, and I will say probably not. But it has increased over years. So we've been very fortunate that the increase, because we have over 13,000 students, the increase in funding has offset the decline in funding that we would have received had there been flat funding. Because if the funding would have been flat, we would have seen trends downward in our total revenue. So to this point, we've been very lucky that those increases in per pupil funding have offset the numbers of the decline. But as you know, we're subject to whatever the legislature happens to provide. So as we move forward, we don't know if we will continue to maintain that.
That's very helpful. I just think that it's important to make that very, very clear as people are looking at the slides and maybe scratching their heads.
Right. Thank you.
And as Donna pointed out in her presentation, we've purposely been very conservative the way we've done this because we don't know what's ahead. And so we use strategically the ESAR dollars so that we can build the reserves back up in case there's a decision by our community to not renew the referendum, and we need to make sure that we have, that we thought through that. So we've been very conservative. We've been very conservative on purpose.
Thank you.
Donna, can I ask, like, as people look at this report and see the Rainy Day Fund and, you know, how conservative we've been, could you just share like an estimate of like what our monthly payroll looks like so that like how long that Rainy Day Fund would last?
Right now, if we take our payroll and benefits, so we merge those together because we're largely payroll and benefits, we spend approximately $144 million annually on payroll and benefits. So if you looked at that at a monthly basis, we're over $12 million probably, approximately $12 million a month for two pays. Some months we have three, so some months are worse than others. But that does not take into consideration other costs that we have to cover, but that gives you a rough indication.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the financial indicator report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I could entertain a motion of adjournment?
Can I make a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance meeting and immediately reopen the Board of Trustees' regular meeting?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Thank you. We are moving on to our opening of our regularly scheduled board meeting. At this time, we did have a presentation from bring change to mind on the calendar, but unfortunately, due to illnesses from some of the students and also a conflict with winter homecoming coordination this evening, those officers of that club cannot be here this evening, but we are very happy to know that they are willing to reschedule, and we hope to hear from them soon. Moving on, we will move on to first call for citizen comments. And at this time, I don't see any. These are comments based on the board agenda as presented this evening. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And abstained.
Moving on to new business, the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request, Mr. Michael Cox.
Good evening. Administration seeks approval of Personnel and Professional Leave Request as presented this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel and Professional Leave Request as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Are we on staffing? We got out every position, Phil and Michael? Or yeah, just curious.
It ebbs and flows as we go.
Yeah.
We'll have a couple people that will probably be leaving here with us because they're moving outstate. But as you know, after the first year I've moved on from this school year, the school year is over, and everybody behind me doesn't like that. We're looking at staffing for next year, and so I will start going around schools, collecting openings, and we'll start posting here real soon for next school year.
Bus drivers are pretty good.
Bus drivers are good.
Good.
We do not need any more bad weather for the rest of the year.
Agreed.
At all, but we will start doing that process. Always need elementary, middle school, high school, math, science, social studies.
Good job. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And abstained.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to welcome Mrs. Donna Wilson back up for the December and January accounts payable.
Evening again. The Board Finance Committee met last Thursday evening at our new time of 6:00 PM. We did have one community member present, so we were glad to see that. The following claims were pulled for further review. Choices Consulting Center, $900. Those were for job readiness and life skills consultation services offered to middle and high school students at the Juvenile Justice Center. Those were paid from the Title I Part D Grant Fund. First Makerspace, $22,366, was for laser engraver cutter bundles that include equipment, service agreements, and installation, and those were for Otter Creek Middle School and Woodrow Wilson Middle School. That was paid from Perkins Grant Funds. Pace Analytical Services, $2,014.90. That was for sample testing for the Fayette Wastewater Treatment Plant and the pool at the Aquatic Center. Those were all paid from Operations Fund. The By College of Education, Indiana State University, $8,000, and that was for post-secondary partner costs provided by ISU faculty members who instruct teacher residents and provide training and ongoing assistance to mentors in the Teacher Residency Grant. That's paid from the Teacher Residency Grant Fund. And Ed Tech, $14,150 for preparations, submission, e-rate consultation, FCC program compliance, and timeline and management of the USAC portal for 2025 Category 1 e-rate funding. That was paid from the Operations Fund. And finally, Fink and Company, $57,600. That was for a boiler to heat the pool water at the Aquatic Center, and that was paid from the Operations Fund. Hope this answers any questions you may have, and I'd be glad to answer any that you may have. And if not, we present the December interim and January accounts payable dockets for your approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the December interim and the January accounts payable docket as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Mrs. Wilson?
I'm just curious for Finance Committee members, are we pulling the, like, are you seeing some themes coming out as you're looking through the minutia? Having been on the committee myself before, I'm just curious. Are you pulling things like out that are different?
It's a mix. Well, it was Christina's first meeting, so she had wonderful questions. And then sometimes if we're unfamiliar with the vendor, I'm trying to think what else. Or I was nosey about the Makerspace, and I wanted to know about the Makerspace. So it really just depends on the docket and what's on it. We go line by line, and we were thrilled. We had a member of the public there. I think she learned a lot and had some good questions for us, so we hope to see more people in the future.
I can just say, as not serving on the committee now, but receiving the email from all the questions, it was nice to see I knew who some of those vendors were that were questions. So I think, one, great questions, but two, I always appreciate Donna and Cindy, for you guys following up for us, for the entire board, to see what was discussed and asked during that meeting. And I'm always impressed by the transparency and willingness for you to share what grant funding or what funding source that these docket payments come out of. And I just, I'm always impressed, so thank you.
Thank you for indulging me. I was just curious. Thanks.
We have a motion and a second to approve the December and January counts payable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Or abstained?
Moving on, the property and casualty insurance renewal of 2025. Mrs. Wilson?
Hi, I'd like to go ahead and have Steve Danielson and John Psalm come up and join me tonight.
Welcome.
Since I need support. We come before you this evening.
Got good news for us, okay?
We come before you this evening to discuss and request authorization to move forward with our 2025 property and casualty insurance renewal. For clarification, tonight's presentation includes our commercial property coverage, commercial general liability, and additional liability coverage, commercial automobile coverage, commercial umbrella coverage, that are all provided by Liberty Mutual, and our blanket crime coverage, public official bonds, and cyber coverage that are provided by Travelers. As you know, Epic Insurance works with us on these renewals, and John Psalm and Steve Danielson are also here to answer any questions you may have. It has been past practice to have a January 1 renewal, but due to changes proposed for this renewal, we pushed it back, our date back to February 1st in anticipation of tonight's meeting. As you know, insurance rates are dependent on industry experience, whether that be our experience or national trends. At renewal, we anticipate our premiums will be reflective of those trends and outside influences. Our agents look at proposed premiums, asset values, deductibles, risk, et cetera, bringing those forward to our administrative group as we work with them to discuss our options and opportunities moving forward. The administration considered two renewal options brought forward by Epic. The first option is our traditional fully insured plan renewal at a guaranteed cost. Premiums quoted by our carriers under this option resulted in an overall 21.8% increase in cost or premiums to $1.626 million for 2025. The section option provided was to move VCSC to a $150,000 self-insured retention program, a SER. Under this type of program, a dollar amount specified in a liability insurance policy, in our case, $150,000, would be paid by us before the insurance policy responded to a loss. The insured assumes more risk with lower premium cost. Premiums quoted under this option were $1.178 million, approximately $450,000 less than the premium quoted under option 1. The Epic team analyzed data back to 2018 to determine VCSC's total program costs under both options presented, and in each of the last seven years, the SER program would have been the lowest cost option for the district. Moving to the SER would require the use of a third-party administrator or a TPA, and JWF, who currently is our workers' compensation carrier and TPA, could provide that service at an additional cost of approximately $27,000. With that said, after review of items presented by Mr. Psalm and Mr. Danielson, the administration seeks approval to move to a self-insured retention program for our 2025 renewal. Mr. Psalm and Mr. Danielson would like to come forward with some other comments, and then we will answer any questions that you may have. In anticipation of them needing to respond, I will share the microphone.
Thank you.
Lean in.
Lean in, okay.
For our folks online.
So this is obviously a program a little different than what you've had. I think it mirrors somewhat what you do on the benefit side, and then you incur some risk, and hopefully to drive long-term savings. And that's the goal here. And I think over time, and we even had an actuary look at it, and I think over time, the savings certainly outweigh the potential cost. The other benefit of this type of program too is because of the way liability claims get paid out, they sometimes take years to get paid out. They get incurred, and the insurance company charges it against you when it happens, but they may not pay out a claim for several years. So you get that benefit as well in terms of the cash flow savings when ultimately, before ultimately, the claim is paid. This is a program that some larger districts are already on in the state, and I think more are going to move into. I have two other districts that renewed here this spring, two larger central Indiana districts that are looking at this very model, and I suspect it'll get very strong consideration. So I think it's a prudent move from the district. The claim is capped $150,000, and that's an accident or an occurrence, okay? It's not per person or per individual. It's per occurrence, and that's a very important distinction. And that's a very important distinction in the event of catastrophic loss, whether it's an accident where multiple people are involved. So anyway, the coverage has not changed. It's just strictly a different way of financing your risk. That's it.
Before we can take any questions from the board, we would need a motion and a second to approve moving forward. I can entertain that now?
I can make a motion to approve the property and casualty insurance renewal for 2025 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have questions from the board?
I've got a question. How many total bids do we have to compare pricing?
Unfortunately, the market for schools is extremely narrow. There aren't a lot of carriers jumping up and down to write schools. I'm our school practice leader. We work with 76 educational entities in the Midwest. And unfortunately, I can count on one hand the number of carriers that will entertain schools. And then when you get above 5,000 students, take that down to maybe two or three. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of options for districts. Liberty Mutual is the carrier, has been a very strong school rider for decades here in the state of Indiana. And they dominate the large school space because frankly, there aren't other players.
Why is that?
Risk.
So...
It's a very specialized coverage, frankly. You know, you have to provide sexual abuse coverage. You have to provide bullying coverage. You have to provide school leaders errors and omissions, employment practice, law enforcement. A lot of coverages that a lot of carriers can't get their arms around, okay? We've seen carriers come and go. I've been doing this for 30-plus years and writing schools for over 20. We've seen carriers come and go mainly because they have poor results and they're out. And unfortunately, we've seen that over the years. You've seen that with some of the carriers that you've had in the past. So unfortunately, there's just not a lot of capacity, as we call it, for this class of business.
You had mentioned the specialized coverage, but that's in addition to covering just our physical square footage footprint that we have for our district, for our buildings.
Sure. I'm talking about, yeah, your liability coverage.
And so, I mean, just we're thinking about how large of a corporation we are being full county. What would that look like, you know, based on our buildings? If we had fewer buildings, obviously that would mean our costs could go down, correct?
Certainly. Certainly. Your property is, you're insuring your property values, it's pretty much the same cost across the board. So certainly lower limits of insurance as a result of fewer schools. Yes, your premium's going to be lower.
Are there any limiting factors within that, the facilities, that could be either upgraded, or do you see that's a downplay for us on the bids?
Yeah, for instance, one carrier who would be a potential look at just your property coverage only wouldn't entertain it because roughly 30% of the square footage is sprinklered. And that's more of an expectation today than maybe it was 30 years ago. But for that particular carrier, that's what they want to see. And I've actually, you know, have a few larger districts with that particular carrier, but because of the fact that, you know, we have a smaller percentage of sprinklered space, they're not willing to entertain it.
And also due to the age of the roos as well?
Right.
Does it play a part of it?
Right. And what we've seen over the last couple of years is whether it's personal insurance or commercial insurance, insurance companies don't want to be maintenance programs for people's roofs. So you're not going to get replacement costs on your roofs if they're 10, 15 years old or more. And I'm not talking about just commercial insurance. That's happening in personal insurance as well. The old days of people waiting to get a hail claim, carriers just aren't going to be a party to that necessarily.
Thank you.
You mentioned other school districts starting to look into this. Is this something that's been offered for a while, the SER type, or is this something new?
It's not new. Liberty Mutual, it's newer for Liberty Mutual. They now are filed with the Indiana Department of Insurance to offer this product, although we have had one school district with them for several years on this type of product. That's MSD Pike in central Indiana, which is one of my classes, smaller than you guys. And frankly, it's worked very well for them for a long period of time. Other larger districts have it, Lawrence Township, IPS, and I believe Fort Wayne Community Schools has it as well. I've offered it to other clients as well in the past, and the numbers maybe didn't work. In this case, I think the numbers work.
I'm assuming since, one, we're large, and, two, we have other factors weighing in on carriers willing to cover us. If we choose to go with the recommendation of the SER, and knock on wood, that it doesn't happen, but we have a bad year in claims, are we able to go back to the program that we're on now? Or are we stuck moving forward? If we choose this now, that's where we're at?
Every year is a new year, so yes, you could possibly look at that option, you know, going forward. Doesn't mean you're stuck in this for a period of time. You're not locking into it for, you know, X number of years.
But do you anticipate the rates to continue to rise?
That's tough to say. Very tough to say. I mean, right now, this year, we had more stress on the liability portion of the account versus the property, where we had a little more stress last year. Liability, as I've shared with the Finance Committee, I mean, it's a challenging environment for schools. We don't have anti-immunity laws here in the state of Indiana. We have tort caps, but we don't have anti-immunity laws. And so, you know, we have to respond to claims, whether they're valid or not, if we get sued. So to answer your question, I mean, every year's fluid. I mean, normally when you go into this type of program, you look at it as a long-term solution. And you're going to have maybe a bad year, and as we illustrated, your worst year still would have been better than what is on the table right now for a guaranteed cost program.
You mean the worst year we have on record?
We have on record, exactly. So again, we think it is a prudent choice to do this.
Again, I understand you're right. The coverage, we lose nothing in coverage, right?
The coverage has not changed. It's strictly a way of funding your risk. On stop, I know.
Help me remember. I can't remember which one of you said that it mirrors what we do for employee benefits? Could... Just explain that a little bit, please.
I mean, because you're paying X number of dollars of whatever, of the claim, of each and every claim, okay? And same with your workers' comp, too. It's been that way for years. Same thing. You are taking on that risk. And normally, we do a lot of that as well. Self-insured workers' comp, a lot of our school districts are self-insured, and that is a very good way to go. And so, this is a little more volatile. You can't predict it as well, but it's still, I think, long-term, it's a good choice for the district. And not all schools are able to do this, but you guys can because of your size and because of the amount of premiums that you pay, it can start making sense.
Are there any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the property and casualty insurance renewal for 2025 to move to a SER program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and answering our questions.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Additional Appropriation Resolution Education Fund. Mrs. Donna Wilson?
Back again. As you'll recall, last year, the legislature provided schools additional funding to assist with the purchase of curricular materials, eliminating the school corporation's ability to assess textbook rental fees. Those fees had long been accounted for in the textbook rental or curricular materials fund. At December 31st, 2024, the IDOE mandated schools dissolve their textbook rental funds by transferring balances into the education fund. During the budget process, we were not sure how the closure of the textbook rental fund would affect other fund budgets, nor were we sure of the amount that would be on hand at 12/31 in the TBR fund. Now, based on information received from the State Board of Accounts and IDOE, we know that the purchase of all curricular materials will be accounted for within the education fund and have transferred and closed the textbook rental fund as of 12/31/24. The appropriation requested tonight represents the balance that was transferred at year end. A notice of tonight's hearing was properly posted and advertised, and tonight we ask for permission to seek an additional appropriation of $3,466,000 from the DLGF. Funds appropriated for the resolution contained in your board packet this evening would be used to provide curricular materials for classrooms across the district. President Killian, it would be appropriate to hear any public comments regarding this proposed use of education fund dollars at this time.
So comments from the public. Do we need a motion before we take public comment, Detective?
From the hearing perspective, you take the comments before you do the...
At this time, are there any comments from the public on our additional appropriation resolution? Sina, please proceed.
Since there were no comments, the administration respectfully requests approval of the Additional Appropriation Resolution included in your board packet.
I move to approve the Additional Appropriation Resolution.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question. So the curricular fee appropriation in the state budget was $160 million per year for the whole state, and that looks like what's being introduced for the new budget that's being debated right now. My question is, are we getting about the right amount from that reimbursement to cover what we need?
Based on the report that I submit annually that we work on in our office, Kathy Lady compiles a list of all the textbook costs, and then we look at what we buy in consumable fees to conduct or deliver the curriculum in those classrooms, like welding, foods, those types of things. And we amortize the cost of Chromebooks over the life of the Chromebook, which we consider to be about four years. I would say that the appropriation would be too low because I believe that last year, our costs exceeded, they exceeded $2.5 million. I can't speak to the exact amount, and we got roughly $2 million. That is why every year, we set aside bond proceeds to help us finance the purchase of Chromebooks. The other fees we can handle within, and have handled them within the education fund, the curricular materials within the education fund, because we never received 100% of revenue on those because we billed, but a large majority of our students were on free textbook assistance, so did not pay the fees. But I would say it's low. We get about $2 million, and we do spend more than $2 million, but some of that is the amortized cost of the Chromebook.
And forgive me, this may be drawing a little bit too deep, but when this was first discussed in the previous budget and the state was looking for information from school districts, I mean, we had to tell them how much we were spending in order for them to make that calculation. Is that correct? Or how was that information provided to them so they could... From your perspective, how was that calculated?
I'm not sure how it was calculated. The only thing, the only report that we submitted prior to that appropriation coming out of the state was we submitted the kids' names and the data on those that were on free lunch to get textbook assistance. And then we were given a portion of that back, but keep in mind, because we used to get a free book, an allocation from the state, but keep in mind, also, we had to take the portion that we certified as free kids' textbooks that we didn't get, we could levy in our debt service fund. We had an additional levy within debt service that was usually several hundred thousand dollars that we then levied in debt service and paid our textbook rental fund back. So the first year that we were given the curricular materials reimbursement, we just got a flat amount and continued to get a flat amount per student. We report after. I mean, we report, but the report we submit always exceeds the amount that we've received.
I think part of the issue, if you go back in time, was that the information that they got from the schools on those reports were limited to about textbooks, not the fees. But when the law was passed, it was also the fees that were supposed to be included in that. And those fees are where we get into the Chromebooks. It's where we get into, like in the chemistry class, the sulfuric acid and the hydrochloric acid. When we get into the welding class, you're talking about the acetylene and those kinds of things. And that's the part that wasn't accounted for. And I do not recall having reports or requests for information of that before it was entered into a bill and was passed. I could be mistaken on that, but I don't recall it.
I just, your professional opinion, the state needs to continue to refine how curricular fees are defined?
Yes, it would be nice if they would work with schools to determine adequate funding levels.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Wilson? At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the Additional Appropriation Resolution Education Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and abstained. Moving on to the resolution to transfer amounts from the education fund to the operations fund for 2025.
I promise this is my last item. Included in your board packet this evening is the proposed resolution for the 2025 Education to Operations Fund transfer. This transfer is completed monthly and provides the operations fund with additional financial support for expenses that are not allocated to instruction and learning. As you know, this transfer cannot exceed 15% of anticipated education fund revenue and is used in conjunction with the local tax levy and other miscellaneous revenue to cover the operations and overhead expenses of the district, including capital projects expenditures as well as transportation costs. We are requesting a transfer of $16 million in 2025, which is the same amount that we transferred in 2024. We respectfully request approval of this transfer resolution this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to transfer amounts from education fund to operation fund 2025.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board?
There's a 15% limit on that transfer, so that $16 million, what does that represent?
Roughly 14. Yeah, we're under the threshold.
Do we try to stay around 14%?
Try to stay under that.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to transfer amounts from the education fund to the operations fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Donna.
We are moving on to grants, Title I Part D. And I believe we're being joined by the lovely Mrs. Kaitlin Lutman. I'm sorry, Dr. Kaitlin Lutman. Just Caitlin.
Good evening. I certainly don't want to outdo Donna. However, I do have six grants to request approval for this evening. With that, please excuse my voice. I have just returned and received it back, so.
May I ask, are we taking these and approving them all at once?
I would recommend doing it at once.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am. Thank you. The first is the Title I Part D grant. This specific grant will be in the amount of $1,021,796.53. With this, this serves three community institutions, Jabalt Children's Services, also known as Holy Cross, as well as the Vigo County Homes for Children, and then the Vigo County Juvenile Justice Center. With this funding, staff will provide support to students, specifically VCSC licensed teachers at two of the institutions. One has a retired teacher of nearly 50 years providing support with after-school tutoring. Also with this, there are support with resources so students have access to both core content as well as supplementary resources to enhance the instruction that they receive. The second is the Title II Part A grant. This grant is in the amount of $794.77. Looking at this specific grant, it focuses on providing professional development to our teachers. We have several opportunities throughout the year, and I should say a multitude, and with that, both after school and then during the summer as well. A few examples of this would include conferences as well as a partnership with Rose Holman Institute of Technology focusing in on our math and science. And we host middle and high school teachers on campus for this experience. It has been in existence for many years. Dr. Newport was a part of that for PRISM, and then we've continued funding through Title II as well. Also, in addition to, supplies may be purchased with this funding so that will support the instruction that our teachers are going to learn about and be able to implement in their own classrooms as well. own classrooms as well. I should note, the curriculum and assessment alignment teams are also coming from this grant. The $300 stipend, we're starting with reading this year, is coming from this grant as well, and will continue to be built in. With that, the next is Title III. This is for $24,648. This supports our language instruction for our English learners. Professional development for teachers is also offered, along with the educational support materials and family resources. Many of our schools will host family nights, and they'll be able to distribute materials that the families can learn how to use and then take home as well, to continue that school-to-home connection. With that being shared, Janet Rosemore serves as our curriculum coordinator. She did provide some additional information. We have 279 limited English proficient students representing 33 different languages as well. Title IV, Part A, for this grant, it is in the amount of $479,531.73. This supports well-rounded education, also innovative programming, safe and healthy schools with social-emotional learning, and then also effectively utilizing technology, focusing on professional development. So with this, again, we have that Rose Holman Institute of Technology partnership, we utilize both funding sources to support that, along with our neat trailer experience that many are familiar with, and the learning labs, so we're able to provide support there. And with this, we see a multitude of opportunities that are provided through this grant funding source for our students. With this, both Title II and IV, it's important to note, we do serve as the LEA for St. Pat's as well as Holy Cross, so Jevalt does receive funding as well, and we have an opportunity to work with principals of both schools and continue that partnership and support. They do have their equitable share, and we continue those conversations on a regular basis. The next is the K-12 robotics grant. This is for this school year, it is a competitive grant, in the amount $25,000. We just received correspondence today as well. We do have the high ability grant, and the state has indicated, moving forward, we will not be able to use funding from that any longer for robotics. The good news for our district is, we already have that competitive grant in possession. So with that, we're able to support our teams. We have two at the elementary level, and then we have one in middle, and then three in high school. With that, we do have a partnership with Rose Holman with that as well. Many of you will remember one of the products of our corporation, Katie Collins, and she has been a part of that and continues to support our students. And then also some additional students and professors on campus, paired with coaches who are teachers in the corporation. So we're very thankful for the work that they are doing. The last is the Indiana Department of Homeland Security Secured School Safety Grant. This grant is in the amount of $80,109, and is to enhance safety and security. This is a matching grant. This year, we focused on communication purposes. Mr. Kurt Brenninger is essential to our team in this regard, and so with that, making sure we always have the most up-to-date radios in our possession, so we can communicate within classrooms and buildings. Additional funding continues to be used and will be forthcoming as well. There are also additional grant opportunities we hope to share with you that the state has now presented to supplement this funding source as well, because that amount did decrease, and that was consistent across the state for all school districts as well. With that, I would please respond to any inquiries you may have.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve all six grants as presented this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the six presented grants. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, um, from the board?
I have a question on Title II. Is that up or down, or is that usually hanging around that number?
It's typically consistent, however, in comparison to FFY 23, that fiscal year, it's approximately $30,000 less.
Less than, you said it was 795? And again, that's used for professional development for our teachers.
Yes, yes. And with that, too, looking at this specific grant, $79,000 and change, last year was $740,000. There's overlap in these grant funding sources, it depends on the grant. Some grants are a 12-month grant, others overlap, so we're able to continue using those funds from one school year to the next. And then this year, we actually saw for the first time, the state extended even further and gave us another year, so if we had additional funding to expend, however, we certainly do our due diligence, ensuring we implement and, and access all of the funding and leverage it for our teachers and students.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Just to clarify for folks who are listening, all the title grants, correct me if I'm wrong, those are federal, correct? And then the robotics and the IDHS, obviously, are state.
Correct.
Correct.
And then the one grant that you don't see before you is Title I, Part A, that is the one that most individuals are knowledgeable and accustomed to, serving many of our schools as well. That is still in the process of being approved by the state, but we certainly have our allocation. Right now, the state has delayed, it can take up to three to four months even for an amendment, and approval is taking, in some cases, six plus months, from a July 1st date.
Isn't it true, like, um, we have 12 of 15 elementaries that are Title I? Is that?
We have 15 elementaries, and of that, we now have this year 13 that are Title I.
13 or 12, okay.
Because one of our schools that was previously served, that free and reduced lunch percentage was less than two other schools, those schools, Fayette and Lost Creek are now being served.
Okay.
And then we have two schools that are unable to be served just to the percentage.
Right.
In Title I, Part A, 75% is the must-do, and then you can add grade span, et cetera.
Are any of our middle schools Title I?
Only Sarah Scott. And then Booker T. Washington is as well.
Okay, but none of the high schools qualify because of the population ratio?
Correct. Now, certainly, we can add additional, et cetera, but that stretches the dollars even further, and we've seen a decrease, approximately 600,000 this year alone. Now with carryover, that does provide us that continuation of programming, but it is still declining and essentially rightsizing.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you so much for this presentation. I just had a question, it's just for clarification, I think for those that don't understand, you had mentioned, um, we serve as LEA for Holy Cross and St. Pat's?
Yes.
If you would just explain what that means. Um, I know, during serving in finance, we see that come across, and there's been some questions before.
Yes, so we're the local education agency, so with that, we're the public school connected with that funding source. So our job is to ensure that partnership with that school, to make sure that we're providing support to students. We have equitable share meetings each year and continue that connection and collaboration throughout the academic year as well, to ensure that they have essentially what they need. We're very thankful, because our partnerships have consistently been positive and have maintained, and we always want to ensure that those students are receiving the funding or the resources that they should have access to. And with that said, Vigo County Homes for Children, we know that there was a decision made and then transitioned, that funding has continued as well. And so now, the individual serving as the director will continue to provide support.
I appreciate your work on this. I think, um, you know, you keep referring to partnerships, and I think that's so important. And then, of course, in the presentation of the grants, you, Rose Holman Institute of Technology partnering with us, and I just think it shows that the work, VCSE and, and your day-to-day work is so instrumental for our community and our students, and I just appreciate all that you do and your reports and continuing to share the information you're sharing about the grants that we do utilize for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned about the partnership of Rose Holman, I noticed that our Rose Holman students in the back of the room get a little cheer when they found out that we were doing that, so.
Thank you, guys.
One more question. Um, you mentioned the high ability grant will no longer cover robotics. Is that because the Indiana DOE pulled it out for that K-12 robotics?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the correspondence we received today, which is very similar to other grants, for example, formative assessment, looking at the transition we're expecting this next school year, focusing especially with the I-Learn checkpoints, the state is now providing its formative assessment, so not unheard of and no surprise to us. But thankfully, we have that grant, so we'll be able to continue that support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Liederman or Caitlin? Thank you. At this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the grants presented this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstain. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move on to comments and correspondence. Um, this is now time for the second call for citizen comments. I'm looking in the back, we have none at this time. Um, thank you all for attending this evening. Um, we will move on to information from our superintendent and board members.
Yeah, um, before I get started on congratulating our, our different students, I do want to remind people, there was a recent statutory change that limits the number of e-learning days that we can do each year, and we just want to make sure that people, I, I think one of the news stations did a story on it, but we just want to make sure that, um, our community is aware that because we've had three school closings with e-learning, um, we will now, if we have any closings for the rest of the year that are weather-related, we will have to make those days up and tack those on to the end of the school year. So, um, just want to make sure that people are aware of that. Um, we did in future calendars, this was the last calendar that we had that had been prior, previously approved, um, so we don't have built-in makeup days embedded within the school year, but starting next year, because of this legal change, we have had, we do have at least two built-in days in the future. We just don't have them this year. Um, and the change for next year's calendar is in response to this statutory change, but we just want to make sure our community is aware of that, um, should we get inclement weather. But we're gonna hope that our weather people here continue to talk about 40-degree weather as we had here recently, and then becomes a new point. We do want to make sure that we recognize that we were represented at the IHSAA Girls' Wrestling State Finals, and we want to congratulate South Vigo High School's Trista Powers, who placed third in the state in her weight class. Congratulations to our Terre Haute North Patriots freshman, Emma Ellis, who placed seventh, and congratulations to Chris Painter for the special opportunity, um, she serves as an IHSAA board member, um, and because of that, she was able to present Emma with her seventh-place medal during the podium presentation. Want to congratulate the West Vigo Seventh Grade Boys Basketball Team for winning the Western Indiana Conference Western Division Championship. We are told that this was the first time in school history that West Vigo Middle School has achieved that, and we want to wish them luck tomorrow when they play Cloverdale for the overall WIC championship. We also want to recognize and thank our board members for the work that you do. Um, January is School Board Appreciation Month, and thank you for what you do. Also, on Saturday, we learned that the Terre Haute South Jazz Band participated in the 35th Annual Purdue Jazz Festival. They received a Division One rating for their performance, and we also had recognition for Xander Tracy and Walter Gordon. They received Outstanding Soloist Awards. After their performances, they were able to have a short clinic with the founder of the Purdue Jazz Festival, Dr. Lisa May, and we appreciate the instruction that she was able to give our students. I also want to recognize that starting next week, like many throughout our community, whether you could define that as our city, county, state, or country, our schools will be celebrating Black History Month in a variety of different ways. I encourage everyone in our community to take advantage of the many opportunities that are available throughout our community to become more knowledgeable about the many significant contributions that are made by Black Americans throughout our community's history. So, we just want to, since Mary forgot to give us that shout-out, that reminder, I will give us that reminder, that that's gonna start next week, and there are a number of activities throughout our community.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any information from board members?
Sure, I got a couple of comments. First of all, I'd just like to thank the communities for the support of this board, since I want that to go out loud and clear. So thank you, community and organizations and people supports this board. Thank you, Dr. Hensel and staff, for everything you do, our employees that do every day, every day, we're making a difference. And also shout-out to county and city. I think the partnership that we have with county and city people, our staff, is remarkable. It's quite the best I've ever seen in the 23 years I've been in this community. Catherine, thank you. You're the silent one up here, you know? Thank you for herding the cats here, okay? But thank you for everything you do. And, you know, last thing I just gotta say, I'm proud to be on this board. I am. We're all coming together, we're, we're gonna make this work, and I'm real just proud to be on this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to, um, just give a reminder, those listening and those here in attendance, um, if there's something you'd like to see celebrated, a student, an organization, an accomplishment, of course, there's so many great things happening, we can't keep up with it, as, as in a timely manner, so if there's something out there you want to share, please reach out to any of us as board members, or Catherine or Dr. Hensel. Um, Katie, Katie would absolutely, uh, she's about to raise her hand, she would absolutely take that information as well, but we love hearing about what's going on in our community with our students, successes or challenges they're facing, but just something they'd like to be recognized for, to have them attend the meeting, um, that's why we're here, and that's why we're doing the work that we are. So, just keep that in mind, uh, please encourage anyone to reach out to, come and speak with us. Is there anything else? All right, as a reminder, um, our next meeting is Monday, February 10th, here at the administration office, starting at 6:00 PM. I will take a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1788.88]